Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 19th, 2022 Hybrid Meeting of the Planning Board of the Village of Southampton. Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
Let's move. We open the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
The ayes have.
Let's proceed. This is the work session part of the agenda. We have 5:50 and 5:54 Hill Street and 62 Cap'n Snack Lane for review and discussion. And I think that the applicant is here.
Yes. Can you pull your mic down?
Sure. Sorry.
Yes, my name is John Bennett. The applicant himself, James Zuhuski, is here. Vincent Gordiello from the Rainier Group, as well as Bailey Larkin, who's another lawyer for my office. We also have, we just today got a rather lengthy letter regarding this from Ms. Eisman. We have a response.
I wasn't willing to talk about this. We're more than willing to talk about any of these here issues, but I will tell you that based upon my review of the law and based upon my review of the, not only the law, but the case law, specific to this very application, including a zoning board of appeals determination upholding the zoning board of appeals approval, that the only really appropriate, the only really appropriate thing for this board to do right now is to schedule a public hearing and make the referrals. I'd like to expand a little bit on that, if I may. So, we received Kathy's memorandum dated September 16th. We demand that a public hearing either be waived or scheduled now. Village Code, Section 9718, provides a list of requirements for submission of the request of a final plat. The applicant has complied with these requirements. I don't understand why the Nelson Pope and Voorhees memo says that the application is incomplete. The application is decidedly quite complete. There's a difference, which I find as a land use lawyer and litigator for over 37 years, a very frustrating thing that happens. If you are continuing your review of an application, that doesn't mean that the application is incomplete. The application is complete. We've submitted all the required submission requirements and all, so I object to the characterization of the application as incomplete. This application has been pending for over 10 years, and we think that the memorandum today demonstrates a continued unnecessary and illegal delay of the application moving forward. The Village Code, Section 9731B1, provides that the letters from the Electric Power Agency and Water Service are provided. Strangely, those are said to be insufficient. Never seen it before. Never seen it before at all, as I have seen most of these picky and oftentimes illegal comments in these two memos. So, the PSEGLI and SCWA letters were provided, I'm sorry, those agencies were provided copies of the final plat. That's all that's required, showing the same configuration being contemplated by this board. Responsive letters submitted with the board acknowledges these submissions and services. The letters are sufficient, and no further communication with PSEGLI and SCWA are required. A request for more detailed correspondence from these service providers is, again, evidence of bad faith and delaying review of the application. The zoning board of appeals decision dated October 26, 2017, a copy of which is the next, has been upheld by the Supreme Court of Suffolk County, and it included the following condition. And now I'm talking about the request of Nelson Pope that we put each IA system on each separate parcel. That's simply not done. I challenge anyone, anyone, to find any map filed in the Village of Southampton or in the town of Southampton that shows anything other than a typical wastewater service and typical, I'm sorry, wastewater system and water service. Why is that? Because before you build a house, you have to go to the Suffolk County Department of Health Services and obtain a permit, as everyone knows, for that individual house. That's why every single subdivision that you see will show a typical wastewater system layout and water system. You do not see wastewater systems shown on each lot. It's not done. It's not part of the subdivision requirements. It's not part of the public health law requirements for the filing of subdivision, of which I've handled probably 200 subdivisions in my, well, that's an exaggeration, 100 subdivisions in my career of almost 40 years. Simply not done, not required, and why? Because when you go to build a house on a subdivision, on a lot, on a map that is shown on approved subdivision map, you still have to file the separate application for the house because that's the site-specific information that's required on the house. We show, as a zoning board of appeals required, a typical IA system on the subdivision map. There's no need for anything else. So, the detail, there's sufficient for review by the planning board. Indeed, complete sanitary plans, as requested by most recent memorandum, are not necessary for review by this board. It's beyond your jurisdiction. It's beyond your ambit. It's beyond anything. Again, this is very, I've never seen anything requiring this sort of information, a lot of which is outside of your jurisdiction. Then, this almost, this almost was like touching like a silver cavity with a piece of metal on one of my teeth when I saw this inane comment. "The correction of the building envelope for proposed Lot 3." Let me tell you something about the building envelopes. Take a look at the zoning board of appeals decision. End the, okay? As noted in the task decision, the applicant seeks relief from the provisions of 11611.1, those are lot designations, I'm sorry, setback designations, to designate certain yards and building envelopes for each of these three lots based upon the respective areas shown on the map. These lots, these building envelopes were shown on your sketch plan. They were shown on the zoning board of appeals approved map, and that has significant irretrievable impact. The zoning board of appeals specifically determined that on the envelope shown on the sketch plan, and those envelopes shown on the sketch plan are entirely consistent with the final plan prepared by Saskia, dated August 11, 2022. The ZBA decision further notes that the building envelopes, quote, "will provide substantially better setbacks in separation of buildings than currently provided by the existing dwellings and the industrial storage warehouse." Thus, the zoning board of appeals specifically analyzed and approved the building envelopes. And this board cannot request any correction to the building envelopes because they were determined by the zoning board of appeals. Period. End of story. This is what the case law calls "planning board meddling in zoning board of appeals decisions." And you don't have to take my word. I'm going to talk to you about two cases. One is Pavone versus Planning Board of the Town of Huntington. In that case, prior to seeking approval for the subdivision, the petitioners obtained the approval of the ZBA for width and setback variances. Therefore, noted the court, the lots with the approved variances were conforming when they appeared on the subdivision map. The zoning board of appeals has established the zoning for this area. You can't meddle with that. They've established the setbacks. They established the setbacks based upon your approval of the sketch plan, but then they specifically analyzed and talked about those setbacks. That decision was appealed and affirmed by the Supreme Court, Suffolk County. So, anything that you try to do to now change those building envelopes is ultra-viruses because the zoning board of appeals has established the zoning for this subdivision. You don't have to trust me. You don't have to rely on me. That's why I'm giving you the case law. Thurman versus Hallahan, another second department case. The petitioners proposed a two-lot subdivision of approximately, on a two-acre parcel. Interestingly enough, in that zoning district, if you read it, you needed two acres for each lot. But the zoning board of appeals granted the relief because of the character of the neighborhood. Same thing happened. The petitioners submitted a subdivision plat. The board disapproved, the planning board disapproved the plat based upon findings that the development did not sufficiently conform with the town zoning ordinance. Listen, the issue of conformity with zoning regulations is within the jurisdiction of the zoning board. Consequently, after the ZBA made its determinations, it was improper for the planning board to reconsider the issue of conformity with the zoning ordinance. I do not understand why this very, very, very common, well-known case law is being ignored. It's that simple. I talked about sufficient plantings to adequately buffer the property. The memorandum attempts to graft water conservation requirements on the application, which are not found in the Southampton Village Code. You have a rulebook. It's not just make it up. You can't just put things in there that are not in your criteria for a subdivision. We're past Seeker. That's the other thing, that unbelievable, you want to talk about Seeker? You can't open up Seeker. That should disappear out of the memorandum. It's unbelievable that it's even in there. Listen to what has been gone through by the ZBA and this board. Testimony reports and correspondence of the planning board, the village planning, engineering, and historic preservation consultants. By the way, the only thing that was left for us to go to another board, other than this board, on the conditional approval was to go to the Board of Historic Preservation to take down that house that was on the parcel on the east side of the property. And I had to sit there for five months and argue about that despite the fact that Mr., what's his name? Ruttenberg's lawyer came in and insisted that the house shouldn't be taken down, and despite the fact that the house, he was saying, should have been preserved, was on the wrong lot. He was talking about a house that had been torn down in the '70s. It took me five months to get the architectural review board to finally realize that Mr. Ruttenberg's lawyer, Mr. Bregman, was putting in false information into the record. He was talking about the wrong lot. This is the type of things that we've had to deal with on this three-lot subdivision for over 10 years. The fact that the composition of this board has changed is irrelevant, nor can a planning board simply change their mind. This is right on point for Seeker. That's Westchester Day School versus Village of Mamaroneck. You can't, this is, this secret determination was made.
How many years ago, Billy? Five years ago?
Five years ago. This is not a situation where anything has changed. Absolutely nothing has changed. The only thing that has changed on this property is that this allegedly historic house has been taken down. So, I'm here, as any lawyer worth their salt would do, who knows what the rules of the game are and how these things are supposed to proceed, for you to demand that you make the required referrals and you set this down for a hearing, because that's what you should be doing right now, instead of ping-ponging this applicant, who's been a fine citizen of the Village of Southampton, served for many years on the zoning board of appeals, has also been a damn good citizen, and happens to be a very good friend, has done nothing other than what has been required of him over the course of 10 years, and still is being met with what I can only euphemistically call BS. This is not within your jurisdiction. There are rules. There are rules. You know what this reminds me of? There's a wonderful movie that I keep on watching. I watch it, I'll see it, seen it 20 times. It's called The Big Lebowski. And at one point, he turns to one of the other characters and he says, "Smoky, this is not Vietnam. There are rules." And that's what I feel like the situation I'm in now. The rules, the case law, the case law in this particular application is being ignored. So, somebody's got to grab somebody and say, "You've got to file this out. You've got to make these referrals. You've got to schedule a public hearing and be on with it." Anything else is you're meddling with what's with the record that's been established and approved by the Supreme Court. So, anything else, including, let me talk a little bit about Mr. Reisinger's memo, which are, again, totally inappropriate, totally inappropriate for the, for the planning board subdivision review. This request is essentially requiring the development of complete site plans for development of these residential properties. This request is beyond the scope of this board's review. The extent and location of the driveways within each of the residential parcels were reviewed by the village building department, once development plans for each specific parcel have been established. The building department will not, they will not, they can't, under town code, issue building permits for construction of residences on these parcels unless adequate drainage has been provided, as per the village code. I have to keep all the drainage on my property, as per the village code. The final plat specifically indicates that each lot will have its own water service tapped from water main in Hill Street. Mr. Reisinger's comments regarding extension of water mains are wholly not applicable. Adequate demonstration has been made as the proposed grading and drainage, and if they want further comments, we're not down, we're down to tweaking now, which happens in the final couple of meetings, but there's absolutely, it's improper to do anything other than to schedule a public hearing and to make the referrals. I had to make my own referral to the fire marshal, and the fire marshal's response was, "Why is it taking so long? Why didn't I get this from you? Why did I have to get this from you?" Because referrals should have been made. You know what, you know what the referral to the county planning commission looks like? You send them a copy of the map. Should have been done months ago, months ago. So, again, my demand is that you schedule a public hearing and you make the referrals.
May I be heard, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry?
May I be heard?
No, I want Vincent Gordiello.
I'd like to hear from my counsel first.
Oh, certainly. It's your problem.
I didn't want to interrupt counsel while he was speaking. Certainly, I disagree with his representations. Certainly, I take exception to his statements and his castigation of this board. That's improper and shouldn't happen. I expect that perhaps he felt his temper flaring, but that's improper.
I didn't feel any of those things. Counsel, I didn't interrupt you once. Well, stop saying outrageous and illegal stuff.
Not once did I interrupt you, sir. Please let me speak.
Yeah, because what I said was appropriate.
Sir, please don't interrupt me.
Don't castigate me.
I didn't interrupt you. I didn't interrupt you. Please don't interrupt me.
Well, then, don't say things that are outrageous.
Please have a seat, sir.
I'm just going to stand here. I won't interrupt you, but I'm going to stand here.
Mr. Bennett, you are risking me closing this down right now. Take your seat and let him say what he has to say.
There was no reason for counsel to castigate this board. That's improper. Shouldn't happen. He may have his feelings, but I disagree with them. This board has a hired consultant. This consultant has prepared a comprehensive report, which this board has. That report reviews the needed requirements. Counsel chose to reference a board of zoning appeals decision. Notably, he did not reference any pages within the decision. That's his choice. I disagree with his representations as to that. The application, based upon the information received from the planner, is incomplete. The application requires further information. The applicant should provide that information. They have a copy of that, and by "they" I mean the applicant, and if you were to review pages one through three and four, you will see what items remain needed. To say that they've submitted letters, for example, from PSEG, misses the point. The fact is that those letters need to comply with the requirements of the planner so that the planner can advise the board. To say that they have submitted documents from Suffolk County misses the point. They need to submit documents that comply with what would be needed so that the village planner can adequately advise this board. To say that all they have to provide to you is any type of sanitary system misses the point. It misses the point of the zoning board of appeals decision, which specifically references exploration of an IA system, for example. Those are just some of the items that are within the report. For counsel to say that all he did was to write to the fire marshal, he's making representation as to what someone said to him. I won't say that what he heard was incorrect, but I will say that no matter what, there still needs to be the response from the fire marshal. The report, the application as it stands is incomplete based upon the information received from the planner. I would suggest that the applicant be asked to comply with what is being requested. At such time as they do, when the application is complete, the matter can then be appropriately scheduled. I don't know if Ms. Eisman has any further comments with respect to her plan, but I'll leave that to her.
If there are any specific questions that I could answer, then, you know, we can discuss it.
Okay. Thank you. So, how much time do you need to come back with a complete application?
Well, the fire marshal did.
How much time do you need to come back with a complete application?
Anthony, let me correct something, because that's important.
I asked you a question. How much time do you need to come back with a complete application?
I have a complete application.
No, you don't.
Well, you're saying that, but I read the case law and I read the code of the Village of Southampton, and I have a complete application.
How much time do you need to come back with a complete application, as outlined in this memo from Nelson Pope and Voorhees?
You can adjourn it over my objection for two weeks.
I would suggest that the board do that, and I can certainly follow up with counsel. You had cited some case law counsel. I just.
The case law's in here. You can read it.
Okay, I'd like to.
Okay, but I do, I do have to correct something. The fire marshal has indeed responded to a referral, and Ms. Eisman has acknowledged that.
And how does that play into any of this?
Because counsel said.
Does that make your application complete?
It does not.
It does not?
No, I did, no.
So, I'd like to move that we adjourn this matter for two weeks to give the applicant a chance to come back to us with a complete application. Can I get a second?
Over my objection, you should be scheduling a public hearing.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll get Ms. Cooley. I think she's counsel on the next application.
Thank you. So, moving right along to site plan review, Town of Southampton, 51 Pond Lane. I can't recall, is this a new adjournment date?
Yes.
It is. Okay, I thought so. So, the applicant requests adjournment to November 7th, and I would like to move that we grant that adjournment. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. So, moving more along, we're at 71 Hill Street, LFC. Public hearing is closed, and we're here to discuss the resolution. Want to take over?
Sure. Linda Riley, 235 Hampton Road, for the applicant. I want to start out by saying that since the last meeting, we did get, discuss, or at least I discussed, with Alice Cooley, some of the conditions, and we had some back-and-forth about it. She did provide me with a possible updated draft of the conditions, which I understand is only a draft, but I would like to sort of start out by directing my comments toward those things that are still on the list that we have a problem with. Although I'm prepared to address the other ones, too, in case you still want to go through those. But she took out prior conditions number five and seven, which we objected to, and I'm not going to belabor those things. So, it feels like one of the really main, if not the main, issue here is in terms of cross-access easements between this lot and the neighboring lots. And we have done some research of our own, some legal research. It struck me as very odd that the Village Code does have something that purports in the code, as a zoning code, to say that an applicant on a site plan has to, has to provide public access via vehicular or pedestrian pathways. That's unusual. It's very, it's very common for planning boards to take a look at this, to evaluate it, to provide in situations where it's appropriate for public access, where there's a use that's proposed that's going to change things, it's going to have a direct impact possibly on surrounding uses, and if that's a way of addressing it and there's a rational explanation for it, fine. But, and indeed, I took a look at the New York State Enabling Acts, which are the state, this is the New York State law that sets forth what the Board of Trustees has jurisdiction in doing in terms of adapting local laws. It's, I'm not, I don't want to, that's not for you to decide, so I don't want to belabor that too much. But also with what the planning board can do under the state, the state laws that provide the enabling legislation for what's within the site plan approval authority of a planning board. And certainly, the authority allows you to set some conditions, but those conditions have to be, there has to be some basis, some rational nexus between the condition and what's being proposed. So, having said that, there is not a now, and we've had, we've said this before, there is no cross-access that is legally or physically in place now, or ever was in place, between this lot and any of the neighboring lots. So, the neighbors are not in any different position if they don't get it in the future, if they even want it in the future, which we don't even know. And I think the board needs to take into consideration that this is a resort hotel use that we're talking about here. And a resort hotel is going to have, guests have certain expectations about what, what the amenities are going to be in a resort hotel and what the surroundings are going to be like. And our difficulty in this case is, more than anything, the thought of having car traffic or pedestrian traffic within feet of sliding glass doors and balconies and also decks off a first-floor hotel guest rooms, it makes it really untenable. It's security issues, it's privacy issues. People do not expect to have pedestrians walking, you know, five feet in front, or 10 feet, or whatever it is, in front of their, of their rooms. So, and besides these security and privacy issues, which really would detract from the viability of this whole project, there's no rational basis that I've heard yet for imposing cross-access easements in this particular case. The boards, the board spent a lot of time at the last meeting talking about, or expressing a sentiment that there was not enough parking here on this site, now that, now that the parking on Varian Way has been taken away by the fire marshal and his requirements for a fire lane. And that's, that's interesting, although we've said, and it's on the record, that we have complying, you know, we're code compliant in terms of the number of spaces that we are providing, and we never took, counted one way or another. are providing and we never took, counted one way or another, the spaces on Varadian Way and in terms of anything. But if you're, if it's, if you're concerned about having not enough parking, it, it is irrational, I think, to then say that we have to open up our parking lot to the public, that we have to allow anybody who wants to come there, come there and, and not have any, not have any privacy to our parking lot, not be able to say this is for house guest, you know, hotel guests only.
Can I interrupt for one second?
Okay.
Because I thought we had moved beyond vehicular cross-access and at this point we were looking at the possibility of hotel guests only coming from another, from that other parking lot.
From that other parking lot, but it, I, I, I don't really think the hotel guests are going to want this, it's not for their benefit. And I'll tell you why. The movie theater is right next door, it's right next door. And all you have to do is walk down a little sidewalk and then there are going to be pavement, there's going to be pavement up from the corner to the next one. The next door lot, the, the movie theater lot, let's use that, already has two, two access routes out of it, one on Windmill Lane, one on Hill Street. They're not going to be in any worse position and it's not going to, I don't, I think the hotel guests are going to be much better off. And I have a client who's in the hospitality business, they're going to much prefer having some, some privacy around their rooms and some nice landscaping as opposed to walkways where theater goers can, you know, traverse, including themselves. I mean, it's just not that far. So, our objection basically to answer your point is, is the same on the pedestrian easement as a matter of law and as a matter of, of situation and fact, I mean, the particular use that we're proposing as it is on the vehicular cross-access. So, and there is, there, there, there is some law on this again. I provided cases that are, that come from, the Nolan Dolan line of cases that come from the U.S. Supreme Court about not being able to exact sort of public access from an applicant who's trying to do something with their private property. It's a well-known line of cases and I also provided her with some New York State appellate division and Court of Appeals cases along the same lines.
Can I interrupt again?
Go ahead.
Because I'm just trying to.
Yes.
Doesn't this come down to us being compelled by our village code?
Yes, and the, and the building inspector has determined that this applies.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, everything you're saying, I, it makes sense to me, but we, we have, we're bound by, we're bound by our little, by the village code. And I'm just trying to get my head around that, like, do we really have a choice?
Well, let me, let me just say this. If, if, there are other things that require, according to the building inspector, this is the first time he's raised that with me as being something that the code requires, but step that aside. There are other things that require variances on this. And obviously, we have to go before the board on those. I just, I, I, then leave it out, leave it out, let the zoning board decide. If, if, if indeed, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's rationally related to what you want. I mean, there's a swimming pool here that's proposed, that's, we got to go for a variance on, there, there are other things. So, and you're not looking at those, you know? Why should it be a condition on our site plan approval when, you know, when there might be other ways of addressing this? And there are other ways of addressing it. I mean, we also had some conditions that relate to the use specifically, both the workforce housing use and the resort hotel use. And basically, both of those provisions, those conditions sort of spit back half of the, the, the law, and, and here is a code provision. And we're, we're not arguing that we don't have to comply with the zoning code, except with, with, with that one provision that I do think is illegal, requiring cross-access easement. But we, we are of course going to comply with the code in terms of what the code requires for workforce housing and for ho, resort hotel use. You, the village has the authority to enforce that. I mean, they can, they can drop a summons at any time if we do not follow the code on those things. What, what's disturbing though is to, to have those separately as, as a condition by the planning board that, that might be seen to impose an obligation even if the law changes. Who, you know, laws do change and if the legislative body sees fit to enact some legislation in the wayfar future, I don't know, there's nothing pending now, I know, but to make, you know, a resort hotel a permitted use or something, why should we be, or, or workforce housing a permitted use? And they change the regulations or however they do it, it seems to me that we should be not held to a stricter standard and held to an old law.
So, if that happened, the, the condition remains with the property? Let's say that the law changes, why wouldn't the, why wouldn't it change across the board for all properties?
So, I mean, that, that condition is here in, in two different ways, so I would say if the law changed, they could seek to modify their site plan, which they'd probably have to do anyway if they were making some sort of site adjustment and wanted to change that affordable, oh, can I just finish, please? If they wanted to change the affordable apartment to some other use presumably, but then, you know, we've also asked them to covenant that it would remain affordable, so that would be something that would be in perpetuity unless waived by the planning board.
It's the perpetuity that we object to. And I agree with your counsel that it, most changes of use, at least the way the law is now, are going to require, you know, a modified site plan approval anyway. But I, so I.
I mean, wouldn't it be, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not an attorney, but wouldn't it be a quick, but, you know, the law has changed, the perpetuity is gone now, can we amend our agreement?
You know.
Well, the covenant is, is not an easy fix.
It isn't, okay.
No.
Okay.
So, that's, those are the main points that I wanted to bring to your attention and discuss with you. And my client feels very, very strongly that they, you know, will have to contest if, if some of those conditions are, are imposed, that they are going to have to contest to make their project viable. We have, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about other things or, or even things that I just discussed.
Does anybody have any questions?
Is there any point that you want to make that? Yeah. We, we have, my client has another attorney involved, her name is Nika Strunk, and if I can just invite her.
Hi, good evening, Nika Strunk, 37 Windmill Lane, Southampton, for the applicant. I'm here alongside Lynda specifically to address the, in particular, the, the cross-access easement requiring, requirements that we see in this draft, draft conditions. It's my opinion, as a person who has litigated a number of constitutional taking cases, that the cases hold that the right to exclude the public is one of the most essential sticks in the bundle of sticks that makes up property rights. And that if this board were to require that privacy and that right to privacy and that right to exclude the public to be sacrificed by the, the applicant as a condition of this site plan approval, it's our position that that would be unconstitutional. Now, I know you find yourself in a bit of a bind because you have a code that seems to require that. I don't know whether it's been consistently applied to all, you know, similarly situated applications, but the applicant has made very clear that they would challenge that by way of an Article 78 proceeding and a declaratory judgment to the extent that the code purports to require that, it's in violation of the United States Constitution. So, we would, we, that's the position that we would take in that situation. Anyway, if there's any.
Thanks for putting that on the table.
What can I tell you, that's it.
It's much better than a passive aggressive memo with your name attached to it.
No, that's, that's why I'm here.
No, that's great. Well, it's not great, but, okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, that's good.
Yeah, I guess why, my question is, you know, the backdrop of this is changed circumstances of the spots on Varadian Way having been held to not, they're not legal. And so, it's a lot less spots than the, you know, than the village board considered in approving this. So, then changed circumstances, 17 less spots, not enough parking under the approval, therefore the cross-access, that was my understanding, came into play as a proposed solution to overflow parking elsewhere where you could, you know, walk to the hotel. So, the thing I'm having trouble with is, you know, what's the solution to the not, not enough parking now under the original concessions that were made and the original village board approval of these, you know, modifications from the code? So, that, that's, that's the thing with the cross-access. It was, you know, and then when it was discussed last time, it was like originally discussed as a driveway, shared driveway and then, you know, lessened to a walkway, which seemed less impactful. So, I understand what you're saying about, you know, your position is it's not constitutional, then what's the solution to not enough parking under the original, you know, parking that was required for this kind of development? That is my understanding of how this came about in the first place.
I, I hear your question. My understanding is that the parking within this, this parcel as designed complies with the village code parking requirements, so it's not anticipated that there will be any shortage of parking, but I will let Lynda speak more to this because she's got more details on that than I do.
Right. This lot is, as a self-contained lot, provides code-compliant parking spaces. You, you, you give us a problem if you take away some of those spaces because you want some kind of cross-access and you give us a problem if you want us to allow the entire public to park there. But there are still places on Varadian Way, there are still places on Hill Street, there's public parking all over the place, and I'm not sure that 17 is the right number of spaces either. They're, they're, they're not marked and there, there was parking allowed on that side of Varadian Way, but there will still be parking allowed on the other side. Go down to the corner of Hill Street, there's parking on both sides, on both directions and across the street. And there's, there's ample public parking around. Not that my clients hope that their guests are going to be searching for a parking space. That's not good for them, that's not what they want. They are going to want, they're, they're, it's their guests who are going to give them the most compelling reason for making sure that they can park and, and get back and forth. But they also need to provide some modicum of security and privacy, so. Also, I just want to say another thing, that the plan was different before the, the Board of Trustees. We, and as it would be, because, you know, it was, it was a sketch, it wasn't, was subject to site plan approval. They could have put conditions on parking, it says it right in that, in that section of 116.5, that they can set condition, they did not set any conditions whatsoever. It was within their purview to do that and they didn't. So, I, I don't think that they have jurisdiction generally over site plans, but they, but they did have an opportunity to put conditions on their approval and they put none.
So, where does that leave us?
Right now, you have an approval before you, you have an approval with conditions? If you think some of those conditions are not appropriate, we should discuss them?
It's the, it's the access from the theater parking lot that this is really boiling down to the biggest issue, right?
Sounds like it.
Yep. Okay. I would love to hear from the rest of the board if they have any other point.
I was under the impression from our last meeting that, that DeeDee, you were open to some sort of public access in that it might help you, not, I didn't hear anything about privacy or security at that point. So, I'm, I'm just a little confused as to now maybe you don't want to do it.
You heard what you heard, but there was, but they were a little stunned last time at the number of conditions, it came up right at the meeting, we didn't have any discussion ahead of time.
And you know what, Lynda, that's been bugging me for, for two weeks.
What?
That.
Sure did you notice.
You felt like it was just, can I use the word blindsided?
Yeah.
You were blindsided by that? None of this is new news.
No, no, we talked about all of this, all throughout the review.
All throughout the review, we talked about cross-access throughout the review and you were supposed to investigate it and you never did. So, here we are investigating it now, but don't make it sound like you were blindsided by any of this.
I think, I, a lot of feelings were discussed at the last meeting and I think right now we should talk about facts in this determination because I think it would be helpful to everybody.
You're right.
Well, yeah.
I just wanted to, I mean, because I, you know, have been speaking to, to the client as well about this and one issue that came up, I, with respect to pedestrian easement, is that I think her feeling is that if in the future she had a willing partner on, you know, on an adjacent property, that that is something that she'd be very open to exploring, but right now there is no willing partner and to require pedestrian access, even in the future, if it's a requirement of this site plan, it raises a lot of issues for property owner in terms of insurance, liability, maintenance, there would have to be a, you know, there would have to be a meeting of the minds between this property owner and the adjacent property owner about all those issues.
Of course.
And we just don't know if that will ever happen, so for that reason, it's, you know, while I think she would be open to exploring that if she had a willing partner on the other side, we can't say that that's a requirement right now. That's, that's our position.
Well, we can because it's in our code, so that's where we're at, basically. So, anything, and the rest of the board have any other questions? Can you just wait until I ask the rest of the board if they have any other questions? Want to weigh in on any?
No questions.
No questions?
No, I mean, I just want to clarify that, you know, so we're at an impasse on this condition that you would not be able to meet and you would be unwilling to meet this condition. The cross-access.
Unwilling is.
Or unable or.
Is the, is overly strong way of putting it. They are willing to entertain it, particularly a pedestrian easement. They are willing to entertain it, particularly of pedestrian easement, if, if it can be worked out in the future. They're not saying they will never do it. No way, Jose. But they, they are saying that, as my co-counsel here just pointed out, they are saying that all of those things have to be worked out, and it's impossible to work them all out now, number one. And number two, we're not, I mean, you can not, just, well, once again, you don't have to make it a condition of your site plan approval. It's, it's unless, and you, you shouldn't really, unless you have a rational basis for doing it. To just say that the, the code says we have to is, is, is not an answer that we can accept.
Well, I think the rational basis would be that it meets the parking deficit that the board has perceived, but I guess I would ask you this. Do you think that the zoning board could grant a variance from this provision? Because I don't see it as an area variance, and I'm wondering how they could grant that.
I don't know how it could be in the code. Yeah, I, I understand. And, and if they didn't grant it, or if it was thought to be appropriate, I, I'm not sure that it is appropriate to, to apply to the zoning board for that, because it really isn't a sort of dimensional or setback or even a use requirement. It's something that basically says you have to open up your property to other members of the public. You have to open up your property to the public.
Well, you do have a restaurant there, so I would think that, that you would want to have-
No, we will not have a restaurant there.
Well, you have a restaurant right adjacent to it.
What, on the, on the others, on the other property?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but they're not, we're not, that has, no.
No, don't you have Claude?
Claude's, yeah, there's a parking lot there.
Yeah, but they would just walk out the front entrance.
There's a parking lot.
No, but I'm saying, wouldn't you want people from the village to visit that restaurant?
Well, but there's parking there. There's ample parking there. There's always ample parking there. We don't have, they don't have a problem with people parking to go to Claude's on, on their own site. They, it's not a, they haven't been using Seventy-One Hill as a parking area for Claude's. It's just not-
It's in the village code for other reasons.
Okay.
Alice?
Can I just say, say one thing? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I just wanted to ask about, so, Condition Five, which specifies that the building inspector would direct the applicant as to what required relief.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, would that apply for the cross-access, even if it's an interpretation?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that it could. I, I think the issue that we're up against is that, from a timing perspective, we have to adopt something tonight, unless the applicant agreed to an extension, which they indicated at the last meeting that they would not.
What, what, where are we on the forty-five days, and what's your position on? Because I, you know, should we adjourn to discuss whether we want to, you know, since the plan in front of us doesn't have any cross-access, do we want to vote on, on that, or, you know, or drop that requirement?
You'll have a requirement in the code to act within forty-five days at the close of a public hearing, which will be September twenty-ninth. And you do not have another meeting scheduled between now and September twenty-ninth. And we just, my, my client just does not want this to go, to go on and on and on.
Well, what's a seventy-eight going to do?
What's a seventy-eight going to do?
It's going to really delay things, isn't it?
Well, I mean, yeah. I mean, maybe, maybe, because we can still go to, we have no choice if we have a problem with one of your conditions, but to bring an action within thirty days of your decision. It won't work to, to try to come back later and say, you know what, we really don't like that condition. We can't do that. So we can still go to zoning board. We can still go to Board of Architectural Review. There's no reason why we couldn't be pursuing those other applications. We have that Board of Health to go through, the Department of Health Services, we have that application in. There's no reason why those other applications can't be pursued, and, you know, there'll probably be other conditions that come up in the context of those applications that we'll have to deal with. But we can't, we, we, we have to get something behind us. It's been years, and, not, not so much for you, and I'm not castigating the board. Don't take it that way. But it, it is important to them with, with the business climate what it is, with, you know, the way the world is right now, to keep moving on. And so.
Hi, my name is Terry Moan. I'm the project manager for the Southampton Inns, or for the expansion of, or Seventy-One Hill Street. The one thing I wanted to just tell you about what I'm hearing is keeping, to keep referring to the lot adjacent to us as the movie theater lot, as though that use is going to continue. We know the movie theater has been sold, and we know that they're going to do something else with it. And so, but we don't know what. It could be a nightclub that stays open until two o'clock in the morning. Do we want the nightclub guests, you know, strolling through the middle of our property in the middle of the night? No. So, I mean, there are things such as, that have to be negotiated. If you're an adjacent property owner, and you have one use, and you need to protect that use, you're going to have things like, what are the hours when that easement is open, or that gate is open? You know, what, what other requirements could you put in there? So, and insurance, and other things that you'd need to have a willing partner to negotiate. To, to put this as a condition means that we cannot negotiate. And so, so for the viability of the resort hotel, we need to be able to protect the privacy of our guests, the safety of our guests, and if there is a requirement that, that we should talk to our neighbor next door, we will talk to the neighbor next door. But you cannot lock our, chain our hands and prevent us from having a reasonable, rational negotiation with that party. That's, that's the whole difference between what we said, what he said last time, which was, yes, we will be willing to consider. And we are saying, yes, we are still willing to consider, but it depends on what the use is on the other side and what the conditions are that we can agree on with that user. Thank you.
Alice, I think the, what I saw this, read this afternoon, it's Items Three and Four.
Yes.
I think it's both of them.
Are you referring to the mid one?
It's actually Two and Three, Alan.
Two and Three.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, I, I had sent a revised version, so that probably caused the confusion.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to get anchored. They are, as counsel pointed out, they, they were subject to years of debate. Origins were years of debate in front of the village boards, frankly, on the heading of access because of the limitations on parking in the village, which is a huge issue, changes every year, access to the parking lots. And that's how this came into the code, I believe, when it was put in with all the hearings and secret approval and change of trustees and everything that happened. So that's the impediment which is out there for this notion of access, which is pretty abstract because the parking lots in the village, the main target, I think, was the parking lot that's to the south of Job's Lane, which is a one-way parking lot. They could never get it, a property permission to go through to South Main Street. So that was an issue. How do you get more people to use it? But still, it had to do with a major village parking lot. More access became a part of the code that we have to look at because it's commercial buildings. That's the hook. It drives all of this, I believe. If this was just another residence, it's somebody else's problem, not the planning board. So I think, I think it's, it's a real confrontation. If it's a good environmental suit, which I would, I can't join it unless I resign to say I'm strongly for the more rights of property owners to not be interfered with, I'd know where I'd be on that lawsuit. It's, it may be best, in my view now, to drop what I thought were conditions due in the draft I saw, Two and Three, which, as was just referred to, talk about a future negotiation, which, lots of reasons it may take place. It may not. I mean, there's, there's a chan-, a big change of use behind it, including the buildings between the movie theater and the, the other two buildings. I, I mean, I bought a car there once. It's now a brokerage office, I think. So I mean, it's, there's a lot of changes of use. And if there's a nightclub, good luck. I mean, everyone will deal with it. So I would be in favor, I think, Tony, of not putting those in as binding requirements right now.
Did you want to say something?
Oh, I just, I just want to clarify, the question of sufficiency of parking is now contested because applicant's attorney says there's enough parking, and my understanding was that there wasn't enough parking under the code the way the plan is in front of us right now.
I don't know how to answer that.
I, well, I can, I can answer strictly speaking that it is consistent with the code requirements under that section of the code with the forty percent reduction for properties within village business district. So that's the same section of code that asks for these-
Cross access.
Yeah. So.
So under that section, there is enough parking, but also cross-access is suggested or required?
Required.
Required.
Unless physically infeasible, is how it's written. Yeah.
And I think we discussed that vehicular is pretty much, it hasn't been demonstrated, but it's pretty much infeasible, but pedestrian.
And, and this condition gives the applicant the opportunity to demonstrate that.
Right.
But there, there-
To demonstrate both, actually.
There is not, the section of the code that requires the shared alleyways does not have that physically infeasible condition.
Uh, it doesn't.
It says that it is required. It shall be provided.
Okay. So our hands are tied there because of that code. All right.
Can, can the condition be that when the new neighbor moves in, that it's discussed? I mean-
Well, I was wondering that too, but I don't, I don't see how that's-
If I can just answer that, there's, there's, there are cases out there from Southampton where someone, you know, agreed to a condition on a site plan like this, a cross-access, and for a future cross-access, and then they come, then they find out, you know, three years later, when there is a change of use or an application by a neighboring property owner, and they realize, you know, they don't want that. It doesn't work. And their time, and it's very clear that the time to challenge it is, is gone.
Can you be specific, can you be specific with that?
Name the case?
Yeah.
Sure.
It's, it's in Southampton Village?
No.
Town, town.
I, I think he means, just describe the facts.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. He's not asking you to cite case law.
No, not this.
Yeah.
And, okay, there, there is a case where it was actually on the highway. It's a published case that was on what they called North Highway, I guess.
County Road Thirty-Nine.
Yeah, County Road Thirty-Nine. And it involved Dave Bowfill's boatyard and a gas station and a, and the planning board threw on a site plan approval on, on, I think it was on the gas station, that they provide for a future cross-access easement with the boatyard, if that ever came forward. And then they, they didn't object to it within thirty days, and when they weren't able to come up with a meeting of the minds, they couldn't get their building permit extended unless they, they've got stuck in a terrible catch-22. They hadn't finished their project yet, and they literally couldn't get their building permit extended because it wasn't working out. Anyway, so I, I don't, I don't, I, I don't agree that you have to address this head-on. I don't, I don't agree with that.
I mean, I, I think I agree in general with the concept of cross-access. It's just if it can't be implemented in this situation, I don't feel like that's a condition that it's going to have any teeth or, you know, pursue, because there's a lot of unknowns as to the other property owner. You know, I'm sort of, I think that's persuasive to me.
Can I just say one other thing? Just my blind whispering. The, the section that, that Alice just mentioned does say that we have an opportunity to prove that it's physically infeasible. And by the way, that section applies, as far as I remember, only to the vehicular access, not to pedestrian access.
Yeah.
But, and it, it, it is in fact, I, I, we have, it's taken spot elevations, and at the back by the Verizon Lot, it really is physically infeasible. There's a ten-foot drop there.
Yep.
But we didn't want to put ourselves in the position of, but the drop isn't quite as bad up front. Right now, there's some rickety, you know, it, maybe it could be engineered, I don't know, but that wasn't the point. It wasn't the point because it, it, our objection goes beyond whether or not it's physically feasible, and I'm not even sure what physically feasible means. I, I still think it has to be, has to be some nexus between the requirement and a rational basis for it.
Okay, well, our clock is ticking for an approval because every, we, we can't adjourn it, and we have to decide tonight. And this is in front of us, so I'm going to move that we-
Should we go through the remaining conditions?
Oh, sure.
Yep. Yeah, I may have had a mislettered copy that I read this afternoon on my return. I was, I was looking at the copy that was on, Alice, I'm looking at the copy that's here that's stated, received by the building, building department, so there's a subsequent one to that.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's a September sixteen date.
I sent out a later one, later this afternoon.
Should I just start at number one?
I, I'm not saying that we have to go through every condition, and the majority of them are, are not objectionable to the applicant, but Linda did raise her concerns about the affordable housing-
Right.
-conditions that are in there, so I just want to make sure that the board is still okay with the resolution as drafted.
Which number is it?
On the one you have, Tony, it's ten, eleven, and then it's the last condition for the covenant.
Condition ten and eleven.
Probably not on the version you have, Ellen.
No, we just found that one on the nineteenth, anyway. Ten is, ten and eleven are, as continued in compliance with the definition of resort hotel. The two I was referring to are two and three.
Two and three are the cross-access, whatever you said in the code.
Yep.
So I think, you know, that the question that Linda raises is, one, would it be appropriate to add here that if workforce housing were no longer a requirement of a resort hotel, would they be able to come back and amend this? And I think they could come back and amend this as it reads now, but if there's a covenant-
Because it says applicant shall be required to enter into a new agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Right, okay.
And it says unless- And it says unless this provision is deemed to be in conflict with the special permit approval by the Board of Trustees, or the Board of Trustees adopts legislation with regard to the management of workforce housing units that obviates the need for a new agreement. And if the board thought it was appropriate, we could add language along the lines of, "or unless workforce housing is no longer a requirement in connection with a resort hotel use." And if, you know, I, I think the board needs to think about whether that's appropriate. And if, if you think that's appropriate, then I would suggest eliminating, incorporating this type of condition into the covenant, because it would be difficult to undo.
Okay. Yeah, and in light of that, I didn't realize it would be difficult to undo. I, I think we should, if there's a way to make it easy to undo, in, in legal terms, if we could add language, unless you see reason not to.
If the majority of the board thinks that that's appropriate, then that's appropriate. That's, you know, that's not what's been before us, it's certainly not what the board has considered. I think the board has always considered that the workforce housing units would be in perpetuity. I don't think anyone believes that the need for workforce housing is going to go away, and it's, it's a part of this application. So I think the board needs to think about whether it would be appropriate for that to go away.
Right. If, if there wasn't a major change in law, it wouldn't go away, right? It would be, it would remain.
More than possible.
I mean, the, the conditions for something like that to change would have to be a change in the law. Right?
Exactly, yeah.
I think that's an important issue, that the workforce housing.
States.
States.
Yeah, I agree. We need it.
Yeah.
It could be in perpetuity, but the condition, you can always, if the law changes, you can always make an application.
Even if it's-
You can't be required to do something that's legal.
That's what this whole thing started with.
It's, yeah, it's a, it's why the development was allowed.
It's what the trustees would want.
I can't imagine why the applicant wouldn't want to help the village in that way, even, like, it seems like a no-brainer.
The applicant does. The applicant has no-
Then what's the issue?
I don't know. What's the issue?
Well, you tell me, you're the one contesting it.
I'm contesting it, because anything that's in perpetuity doesn't respect the fact that, that circumstances change, sites change, buildings change, everything, there ha, and and-
But if, if things change, there's, there's a vehicle to change this condition.
There's a vehicle, but that assumes, I, you know, but it's not easy, as she said. I mean, there's, when, when a board reviews a site plan application, under the law, it has to, you know, it has to do things that are based on, on reason, and, and when it's a covenant, there's no such requirement of reasonableness. A board can just shut down and say, "We don't want to hear it. You, you had a covenant, you agreed to it, we're not going to hear it," and there's nothing an applicant can do. I mean, once you agree to a covenant, that's, you, you have no ability to make an application to a board to change it. They don't have to hear it. You don't, you, you, you as the planning board do not have to entertain a request to modify a covenant.
What I don't understand at this point is, if that was a condition for this enterprise, why wouldn't it be here? It was a condition.
It's a, it's a statutory condition, there are lots of statutory conditions.
So legally, you're saying with a covenant-
It's baked in.
It's completely-
We, we, we are obligated, under the law, to have workforce housing units, and there are certain things, requirements that go along with it, who could be there, who can't, you know, there's an agreement with the village on how it's going to be administered, and if we don't, you, you, the village has a vehicle for enforcing that. I think the village wants it. My, my clients are perfectly willing to, they have agreed to provide it at their own cost and expense, and, and at a considerable cost and expense. I mean, they're, they have to put in an elevator in that building, that doesn't have one now, because it's going to have residential housing in it. I mean, it's, it's, they're, they're committed to it, but why, why, I mean, zoning codes change. I don't know how else to put it, I keep saying it, zoning codes change, it's the legislature that'll determine what's appropriate or not. I don't, I don't see that this is something that's going to change in the near future, and they're not going to ask for it to change. I just, I, I just am repeating myself, I guess.
Right, but it's not impossible to change. It's difficult, but it's not impossible.
Right.
We have to have a willing board, and I don't, you know.
It's not impossible to change, and frankly, covenants are pretty common, you know? To have a condition that requires a covenant from a land use board, particularly for an application of this magnitude, is, I, I don't think it's unusual at all.
Okay.
Certainly, this board has required them in the past.
Yeah.
But what the board should discuss is, I'm, I'm hearing from the board that the affordable housing should remain, and that it should be-
Yep.
-in a covenant, but should the pedestrian access also be addressed in the covenant?
Oh, sorry, what do, what do you mean by that? Should it be added to the covenant?
I'm afraid to stick my phone in my mouth.
No, so, I had-
My vote is yes and no, as well, because I think there's going to be a day that one of your guests will be really happy if they can get from that, the parking lot that's not yours, to their room.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt. I, I'm, I'm not asking whether or not you're requiring the pedestrian access, because what I've heard so far is, is that you are. What I'm asking is that that provision was also meant to be incorporated into a covenant in the way the determination was originally drafted. And if you don't think it's appropriate to put that provision into a covenant, because it is being suggested that some changes may happen with regard to this site plan and, and neighboring properties, and perhaps even code changes, then the covenant could only address the workforce housing, and wouldn't have to address the shared pedestrian access, and I would just need to revise what you have in front of you there.
I would be okay with that, if I'm, I'm one person, and I think-
I would be okay with it. That's two people.
Do you want to, can you actually handwrite it?
Of course. I'm not a doctor, you can read my handwriting.
What do you think, Ron?
Well, if, if it's a condition, it's, it's the same impact if it's in, as it, in the covenant, right?
But I think it gives it more flexibility.
Are we splitting hairs, or, okay.
Doesn't, is, is that correct? It gives it a little more flexibility for negotiating and-
Us, I plan modification, those certainly happen, particularly because they are going to be required to seek approval from the zoning board. Some things might change here, maybe not. They also have to go to the ARB. Sometimes things change, so-
Okay.
Every once in a while, they don't.
So that would be changed to number 10, is that right?
I was going to change 22 to make it only the provision of paragraph 10.
I must have an interim version, too, because I have three.
Yeah, there's only one original copy with us tonight.
Oh, okay.
Everything else was-
This, this one isn't even original? I mean, this isn't even updated? This is what came this afternoon?
This afternoon.
I think it is.
I looked at it.
Okay, this is, this, this one this afternoon?
You're looking at the right one.
Okay, okay.
That's the one I saw, Jane, that was this afternoon's.
Okay.
Can I pass this over, please?
Okay.
Am I, I'm going to take two and three, I will do that, 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 yeah?
No.
You're saying, sorry, Alan, what were you saying, that you want, you want to take out the-
I would just drop two and three.
Yeah, so, so Alan was-
Just my view is dropping-
You're not, yeah, wanting to drop the condition of the, the, the cross-access?
But we've just taken it away out of a covenant, and it's left flexibility.
You don't want it to, he wants to take it out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, which is, actually, I expressed that, too.
Yep.
Just because the council's on record as saying that they're not agreeing to it.
No, several reasons.
Yeah, several rea, also, I, I think the conjectural nature of it-
They don't have to agree.
No, they don't have to agree, I just, I'm not, for me, it's the, you know, it's, it's amorphous right now, because we don't know who the neighbor is going to be, and we don't know how it's going to be enforced in those aspects. So I feel like we need a final determination.
But if we take it out of a covenant and restriction, there's some flexibility.
It's still in the condition of approval.
May I just say, yeah, I mean, it, we appreciate taking it out of the covenant, but if it remains as a condition of approval, it's still definitely highly objectionable to us.
Okay.
Just making that clear, thank you.
Alrighty.
And my view is that, the building inspector said that this is a code requirement, and the code says shall, and I, I can't advise the board to eliminate that condition.
Yeah, and we're not, we, we're not going to eliminate it.
But if, if a, if a member of the panel doesn't want to vote for a condition, whichever condition it is, they should, they have to vote no, if they don't agree with any of the conditions, is that the idea?
You, you can vote how you see fit.
Yeah.
And that would just be contrary to my advice.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we've discussed this thoroughly. Anybody, does anybody else have questions, real quick?
I'm just curious, are we taking two out? Are we taking it out?
No.
No, we're leaving it in.
No, we're leaving it in.
Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure, because Alan had suggested, and I didn't hear it defended.
But as a new board member, I'm just wondering if the appropriate thing is abstaining, or is it voting no, if you disagree with the condition?
Uh, you're, you're not in a position to abstain.
Okay.
So you'd have to vote, and, you know, voting no is voting no on this approval. This is a site plan approval.
Yeah, with the conditions, yeah, I just, I don't feel comfortable where we are with the conditions.
Okay. We have to move to a vote, it's-
Yeah.
Time's against us tonight. So, I, do you want to make a motion?
Do you want to, do you want to vote?
I do.
I'll move that we vote on approving this, what is this, approval?
I'm sorry, unclear as to what the final resolution is that you're voting on.
It's this document that you received this afternoon, with the, with the, with removing the, hmm, where is it, Alice? What page is it on?
Uh, so just on 22, Linda?
On 22, it'll refer to paragraph 10 only.
10 only.
But you will have all those other paragraphs in there as conditions.
Exactly.
Yep.
I see.
So, is, is that motion clear to everyone? Can I get a second on that?
So can, I'm sorry, can you just say it again? You're, you're adopting the site plan approval resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second it. And, and to that, we're going to need an official roll call for this?
I don't, I don't think she's here.
Yes, she is.
I am here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, she's working.
Yeah.
I'm here, but I have laryngitis. So, Ms. Kell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Claire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Carson, how do you vote?
No.
And Ms. Bernstein, how do you vote?
No.
Okay.
Okay. So, this resolution passes?
Yep.
Three, three to two. Alrighty. Thank you.
Okay.
That was very difficult. I have to acknowledge that this was difficult, and I'm, I'm glad that we all discussed it in a civil manner, and at this point, come what may.
Constructive manner.
Constructive, yes. Okay, let's see, where's my agenda? Yeah, that's it. No meetings to approve, so I would like to move that we close this meeting.
Excuse me, Chair, I did ask you about approving those minutes. I sent you a text with the minutes that could be approved.
When did you send the text?
Um, I sent it to you during the meeting, it's the same ones from the last meeting, they were never approved.
Okay, I, I don't have my phone on, so-
Do you want me to tell you the dates that I have?
Have you read them?
If I've read them, I'm fine.
Have you heard back from Alan?
Alan, I did not get any feedback from you on 8:01 or 8:15, but one of those, you were not present, and you said it seemed fine to you.
Well, I reviewed the middle of the chat anyway.
Maybe we should wait.
I want to wait, and I want to get them on the agenda appropriately.
Okay, 7:18, though, 7:18 can go out, so if you want to make a motion on that one, that's up to you, but I did get feedback from Alan on that one.
I went over everyone she sent me, I went over.
I'd like to move that we approve the minutes for the July, July 18th meeting.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you.